Thank you and welcome everyone to the Special Education Part B IDEA Budget Hearing. Mr. Wilson, please call the roll.
Mrs. Briner.
Here.
Mr. Mihawk.
Here.
Mr. Sparassia.
Here.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we will have the reports of the Assistant Superintendent of Student Services to start off with.
If I may prefix the report, Mrs. Watson is here and is the administrator responsible for the program. This hearing is a requirement of our eligibility for federal funding for a grant that's been in existence for almost forty years now to serve students with specific learning disabilities. And this year's budget represents a decrease of $5,293 from last year. The reduction was approximately $50,000 as a result of sequestration, but a reformulation of the per pupil funding amount offset the majority of it. So the program this year represents essentially the same funding as last year with the benefit of some carryover funds that we were allowed to bring forward to this year. I don't know, Mrs. Watson, if you have more to add?
Is there anything to add?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Comments? And we need to approve this?
No, just that we're required to hold a hearing in the public and offer any opportunity to the public to comment on the intended use for the program. So if there's none, we've satisfied our legal responsibility and...
Any comments from the public? Big crowd tonight. I don't think it's for this.
Yes.
Going once, going twice. Very well. Okay. Take a motion for adjournment then?
So moved. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Mihawk.
Yes.
Mr. Sparassia.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes. Thank you, and we'll reconvene at seven o'clock for our regular meeting. Thank you. And welcome once again to the August 20th, 2013 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. I'd like to call that meeting to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wilson, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Briner.
Here.
Mr. Mihawk.
Here.
Mr. Sparassia.
Here.
Mr. Tuttle.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here. Please join me again in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone to the August 20th, 2013 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the district's paperless Board of Education Agenda System known as Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and chief financial officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please address questions to the president. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on Channel 96 in Mentor and Channel 22 in Mentor on the Lake. If you would, please place your mobile telephones in the silent mode during the meeting. Thank you. First order of business is approval of the minutes of the July 9th Regular Meeting and the July 25th Special Meeting. Take a motion?
Bill, can you separate those as those are nine o'clock?
Okay, I can do that. We'll first go with the July 9th Regular Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any additions or deletions? Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Mihawk.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Mr. Sparassia.
Abstain.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes. And now the July 25th, 2013 Special Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Additions, corrections, deletions? We're all set. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Sparassia.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Mr. Mihawk.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes. Next on the agenda, hearing of the public on an agenda item. Any item on the agenda? Anyone in the public care to speak? I see no one approaching, so we'll move on to the superintendent's report and recommendations. Mr. Miller.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda, and I'm recommending approval of Items 5A1 through 5A7. Also at this time, I'd like to give a special thanks to Mr. Neff, Mr. Leslie Neff, who, as you can see under gifts to the school district, is donating a land parcel just next to the driveway in front of Lake Elementary, just adjacent to the driveway.
Very generous.
So...
Very nice.
We thank him for that.
Okay. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Comments, questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Sparassia.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Mr. Mihawk.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to give the board and our public an update on the upcoming 2013-2014 school year. As of this morning, we are at about 7,760 students enrolled in Mentor Public Schools for tomorrow. That number will change, of course, over the next couple of days. That is about seventy-five students less than what we had this time last year, or the day before school started. Couple things I'd like to mention to the board and to the public. I want to sincerely thank a few people. Since we had such a short summer with the change in our calendar, I'd like to thank our maintenance and grounds crews, Karen Girardi and her transportation department, IT department, nutrition services, and our building secretaries, who all did their usual bang-up job in a much shorter timeframe. So we are excited and we are ready to go, but I thank those people for working just as hard in a short period of time. I also want to thank the teaching staff and administrators for their work on many changes coming down the pike in Ohio this year. Hopefully soon, later this week or early next week, we will have changes to the local report card that will be announced. Our teachers and principals next year, or this school year, will be under a different evaluation system, and so they spent a lot of time preparing for that. So I thank them for their efforts. I'm also excited to talk just briefly about our blended learning instructional initiative that we're launching at Ridge and some of the other buildings this year. The end goal is to increase student engagement. I think we're on the path to doing that. Teachers from our district and across the region will be able to access an observation classroom that we've designed at Ridge, so we're excited about that. Thank you, Mrs. Kinsey, Mr. Shaw, this summer for their week on getting that, for their work, getting that ready for next school year. We also have a studio that's designed for our teachers, that they can record lessons and share with other teachers and students as the years progress. So we're excited about those changes. We're also looking forward to implementing some other blended learning initiatives at Shore, Memorial, and the district is also probably a couple weeks away from announcing an opportunity with Google to demo some of their new tablets for our elementary students. So we're trying to make that push as we see the shift in education changing. We want to be not on the bleeding edge, but on the leading edge. Our district has been also aware of the changes, as I mentioned before, from ODE with everything that's coming out and changing in public education. I will suggest to the board that we'll meet those challenges and changes from Columbus. I see those as partly, I don't want to say a minimum standard, but there are a lot of districts who spend their time on just the requirements, and I think we're at a point now in Mentor where we can exceed what those requirements are. Not only we do what the state and the governor's asking us to do, but I also think it's time we need to start looking at not only technology, but maybe some other programs for our kids, manufacturing, CNC. I drive up and down Mentor Avenue, not a lot, but, and I see people holding signboards for manufacturing jobs, and I'm thinking our kids can be involved in that. So I think we need to maybe expand either through career tech or our own high school, just some different options. The other thing that we've taken, taken a lead on, I think, is some security measures at our schools. John Diamond, I don't think is here tonight, but he's done a lot with PD and the fire department. So even though we're still reeling from Sandy Hook, if you will, we're not forgetting all the security and safety measures that we're putting in place. So that's still on the forefront as well. But that's my brief update. I didn't know if anybody have any questions? Don't have to. Okay. Thank you. At this time, I'd like Mrs. Skolski to come up and give you an update on the summer's permanent improvement projects.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson. Thank you for the opportunity to update you on the 2013 Summer Permanent Improvement Projects. These improvements support our strategic plan to maximize the capacity, effectiveness, and efficiency of all our current and future resources and to provide a safe and secure environment in which students can grow academically and socially. At Mentor High School, A Lecture Hall was renovated this summer. New chairs, flooring, lights, and ceiling tiles have been installed. Exhaust fans were replaced in the main gym, and the flooring in B Lecture was replaced. The parking lots were resurfaced at the administration building in Orchard Hollow Elementary. At Ridge Middle School, an observation classroom was built, and eight classrooms were renovated as part of the seventh grade blended learning project. At Shore Middle School, drop ceilings were installed in the media center, cafeteria and clinic, and the rooftop units in the gym have been replaced. At Memorial Middle School, the flooring was replaced in the band and music classrooms, and repairs are being made to two rooftop units. At both Memorial Middle School and Ridge Middle School, two exterior doors have been replaced. Two new rooftop units were installed at Bellflower Elementary. Our maintenance staff replaced gym lights with more energy-efficient lights at Brentmore, Fairfax, and Garfield, making the spaces much brighter for the students and staff. At Fairfax Elementary and Garfield Elementary, restroom sinks have been replaced. At Hopkins Elementary, the sidewalk has been replaced around the front of the building. At Lake Elementary, the clock system was replaced. At Hopkins Elementary and Brentmore Elementary, the original single-pane windows were replaced with energy-efficient double-pane windows. A set of exterior doors were replaced at Sterling Morton Elementary. And finally, the renovation work for the Cardinal Clinic continues, and we expect this project to be complete next week. I would like to thank our staff for all their hard work this summer. Our facilities are ready for students to return tomorrow morning. Any questions? Thank you.
Comment? I can't pass the opportunity to say thank you very much to you and your staff once again in a short amount of time. I didn't bother to count all the projects you listed off, but to meet that deadline through the summer, that is very difficult. Her and her staff, you've done it once again. I believe this is your third year in a row now you've done this. Well done. Keep up the good work, because I know, and anybody here does a project at home, you'll recognize just one project. One contractor. When they leave your house, you're skeptical. I can tell you when she's done, we're not skeptical that anybody shorted what we are required to get from our contractors. Thank you once again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Skolski. Mr. President, members of the board, I'm recommending approval of Revised Policy 2.04, Evaluation of Administrators, and Revised Policy 7.05 for remediation and intervention programs for reading skills.
Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Mr. Sparassia.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Mr. Mihawk.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. President, members of the board, every year nominations are taken for a classified staff member to receive the Outstanding Service Award. Nominees must demonstrate a zeal for, an enthusiasm for his or her responsibilities, demonstrate a commitment to the school system, and have the respect of colleagues, parents, and students. The four winners selected this year fit that criteria perfectly. It is our pleasure to honor the winners of the 2013 Outstanding Service Awards. I have asked Mrs. Burnett along with Mr. Shaw to make the presentations.
Our first recipient this evening is Paula Coughlin. Paula currently works at Mentor High School and has nineteen years of service with the Mentor Schools. Mrs. Coughlin has held many positions in the Mentor Public School District over the last nineteen years. Throughout all of Mrs. Coughlin's positions at Mentor, she has always found ways to implement new and innovative ideas to make her job more efficient. Mrs. Coughlin's positive attitude towards everyone she encounters makes the working environment a better and more productive place. Mrs. Coughlin uses a professional and thoughtful approach when working with staff, students, and parents at Mentor High School. She always greets staff, students, and parents with a smile and respect. She's able to answer questions from parents correctly and efficiently without disturbing any other employee. Mrs. Coughlin always has a smile on her face and never turns down helping another colleague in need. Congratulations, Mrs. Coughlin. Our next recipient is Mrs. Janet Perry from Shore Middle School. Mrs. Perry has fifteen years of service with the Mentor Public Schools. She's an integral part of the Shore team. She has a great sense of humor, which we all know, works well with the Shore students, families, and staff, and manages a very demanding workload with professionalism and attention to doing the job well. Mrs. Perry, the parents appreciate Mrs. Perry that she goes out of her way to ensure students' needs are met, fees are paid, and accounting is handled in a professional, professional and personal way. Mrs. Perry also assists with the Cardinal Pride positive referrals. This year, she has processed well over 1,000 positive referrals for the Shore students. Paulette Spiehak is the Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent, and she has twenty-two years of service with the Mentor Public Schools. Paulette Spiehak began her twenty-two-year career with Mentor Public Schools on February 4th, 1991. Paulette Spiehak is the superintendent's right-hand person. Sorry, Mr. Miller. They have worked, they have worked as a team as Paulette has been able to share her wealth of knowledge on the history and running of Mentor Public Schools. Paulette's thoroughness to detail is key in keeping the day-to-day operation of the superintendent's office running smoothly. She wears many hats in her role as an administrative assistant to the superintendents. Paulette's responsibilities include working closely with the Board of Education members, working closely with Mentor Schools Foundation, responsible for updating all board policies, oversees all 406 supplemental contracts, works closely with the district's Community Relations Director to make sure various events receive positive publicity. Paulette is the go-to person at the administration building for questions of protocol and the day-to-day running of the building, and the historian when staff members are trying to find out, though, why things are done certain ways. Those of us that are able, that work with Paulette on a day-to-day basis are thankful that we can always count on her reliability, kindness, and knowledge. Aaron Snyder, please. Aaron is with our Nutrition Services Department, has seventeen years of service. Aaron is a very hard worker, and she's very personable with staff, teachers, and students. Aaron takes great pride in the work she does and is very energetic. She is never without a smile or a friendly hello. She treats all of the students and staff, for that matter, with complete respect. Each is a valued customer to her, and she constantly strives to please. She's been flexible beyond words. Aaron is a cancer survivor, and this has given her a greater appreciation for family, friends, and the beauty of life itself. Congratulations.
Mr. President, members of the board, also every year nominations are taken for the Certified Staff to receive the Excellence in Teaching Awards. Nominees must demonstrate exemplary qualities in his or her teaching profession and be involved in activities which reflect professional commitment. These six recipients represent the best at Mentor Schools. It is our pleasure to honor the winners of the 2013 Excellence in Teaching Awards. Mr. Porter along with Mr. Shaw will make the presentations.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Miller, Mr. Wilson. It's my privilege this evening to share with you the Excellence in Teaching Award winners. We'll begin with Ms. Kristen Goddick. Ms. Goddick is a third-grade teacher at Garfield Elementary School. She is dedicated and a hard-working professional who exemplifies how an educator should be teaching during these changing times of education. Ms. Goddick is well organized and runs a structured classroom with enthusiasm and discipline. She shows kindness and patience with students who experience difficulty learning third-grade standards. She is collaborative with her third-grade peers and her peers at various grade levels. The district is very fortunate to have Ms. Goddick at Garfield Elementary. Congratulations. Our next recipient is Ms. Dawn Hill. I'm sorry, and I should have up, if the principals are here too, to accompany the teachers. For Ms. Hill, we'd have Mr. Dudziak from Memorial. Ms. Hill is a sixth-grade math teacher at Memorial Middle School. In the classroom, she is truly an exemplary teacher who clearly demonstrates a passion for teaching math every day. Ms. Hill leads by example in her department and does not hesitate to try something in the best interest of students. She continuously implements innovative lessons daily while showing her passion and enthusiasm toward her love of math. All students in her classroom thrive academically in learning math while demonstrating mastery of all concepts taught. Ms. Hill, we congratulate you for this award. Our next recipient is Mrs. Beth Kleiman. We'll be joined by principal from the high school, Mr. Bill Wade, and really, Mrs. Kleiman could have every principal up here because she works, she has worked in about every building. Mrs. Kleiman has just retired this past spring after a distinguished career as a music, as a music teacher in Mentor, and the past few years has served as department chair. Mrs. Kleiman has high expectations for all members of orchestra. Her high school students have been engaged at all times while working on respected and challenging pieces from the orchestra repertoire while they work to improve individual skills. Mrs. Kleiman's students consistently have earned high marks for curricular adjudications. She uses the resources of her professional organization to motivate and to set high standards for instruction. Mrs. Kleiman, congratulations, and you are already missed. Next recipient, Mrs. Denise Meirnich. Joined by principal, Mrs. Janice Price. Mrs. Meirnich teaches second grade at Garfield Elementary and is an exemplary teacher in multiple ways. Her classroom is a learning community and a family. She sets high expectations for the students in her classroom and provides an environment for all of them to excel. She makes every effort to know the families of her students, as well as each student's personality and interests. She does not allow for students to be disenfranchised. She maintains her professionalism through all the ups and downs which occur in the life of a classroom. She greets her students daily as they enter the classroom to make connections. She willingly accepts special needs students into her classroom and works tirelessly in developing behavior management systems for their success. Her consistent enthusiasm creates a positive tone. Congratulations, Mrs. Meirnich, on earning this award. Mrs. Schellentrager serves as a gifted teacher at both Brentmore and Fairfax Elementary Schools. She's a highly successful, she's highly successful in the classroom, as demonstrated by her students' accomplishments. She works daily on innovative lessons involving the use of much technology. Students show much enthusiasm for the learning experience that are planned by both Mrs. Schellentrager and her colleagues. Students are extremely excited to be involved with the project-based learning plans that she has made. She is often complimented on her motivating and stimulating lessons, and students strive to produce quality work for her at all times. Mrs. Schellentrager, the district is proud of your accomplishments. And Mrs. Marcy Wallaban. And she is joined by Shore principal, Mr. Doug Baker. Mrs. Wallaban is a sixth-grade language arts teacher at Shore Middle School. She has helped present at staff meetings about the coaching process that followed through the educational expert, Margaret Searle, and she is a big proponent of using data, problem-solving strategies, and research-based intervention to help students who are struggling. Mrs. Wallaban has also provided reading interventions through Shore's 2.5 program for the last two years. She has worked diligently to ensure that every student learns to their fullest capacity. Mrs. Wallaban, much credit to you for a job well done. And that concludes these awards.
Mr. President, members of the board, I am recommending approval of Agenda Item 5C1 related to certified personnel, and Agenda Items 5C2 through 5C4, 5D and 5E, also the addendum that was in front of you this evening when you came, all related to human resource matters. And I would like to point out, too, there's one little typo. Gail Leonard Stowery, coming over from the Lake County ESC to our roles, was listed incorrectly as a BA Step 8, should be MA Step 8.
Okay, with that addendum, take a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Sparassia.
Yes.
Mr. Mihawk.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, real quick, before we do that. At this time, it's our privilege to introduce our newest staff members to Mentor Schools. Mrs. Burnett will make the introductions.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson. I am excited to introduce to you this evening our new staff members for this coming school year. We spent countless hours interviewing, checking references, and learning as much as we can about each candidate. We are pleased to let you know that we feel we have the most outstanding candidates with us this evening. At this time, I would like to introduce each candidate to the Board of Education. May I please have Zach Olasio come up front, please? Zach received both his Bachelor of Science degree in physical education and sports and his Master's of Education in Health and Physical Education from Indiana University of Pennsylvania in 2010 and 2013. Zach completed his student teaching experience at Homer Center in Homer City, Pennsylvania during the 1213 school year. Additionally, he worked as an assistant youth and adult sports director at the YMCA. Zach is also a former Mentor Cardinal football player. Zach is also a former Mentor Cardinal football player, graduating from Mentor High School in 2006. Zach enjoys spending time on the beach and this summer, he visited Tybee Island where he proposed to his fiancee who is here with him this evening. We welcome Zach. We welcome Zach as the new health PE teacher at Shore Middle School.
I want to start off by thanking the board for giving me the opportunity for my first teaching job. I'm super excited about it. I'm excited to be a Cardinal once again and come back to my hometown and give to the community what it once gave me.
Next, I'd like to introduce Sarah Claypool. Sarah graduated magna cum laude with a Bachelor of Science degree in early education with a general's endorsement from Baldwin Wallace University. She completed her student teaching at Saint Francis Xavier School in Medina during her second semester of the 1213 school year, teaching both grades 3 and 4. During her studies at Baldwin Wallace, Sarah was involved with a work-study program at the Berea Family Life and Child Care Center, working in various capacities including kindergarten assistant, after-school daycare staff member, and infant care child provider. Sarah was a baton twirler for 14 years and enjoys baking and trying new recipes out on her family. We welcome Sarah as the new Grade 4 teacher at Garfield Elementary School.
I just want to thank the board for this opportunity. This really is a dream come true, and I am so excited to start tomorrow my first year of teaching. I'm sure I will not sleep at all tonight, wondering what's going to happen tomorrow, so I really do appreciate this opportunity.
Kimberly Driscoll. Kimberly received her Bachelor's degree in instrumental music from Miami University in 2008 and is currently working on her Master's degree in music education from Ohio State. Kimberly completed her student teaching experience in the Kings Mills Public School District in Kings Mills, Ohio near Cincinnati. During the '08-'09 school year, Kimberly secured a position as the Orchestra Director with Bryan City Schools, and then again in August 2009, she moved to Middletown City Schools as an Orchestra Director for grades 6 through 12. Kim recently bought a house in the area and her and her two dogs moved into the new house last night. We welcome Kimberly to Mentor Schools as the new district-wide instrumental music teacher.
Well, I just want to say, having graduated from Mentor, I know that I'm filling big shoes with Mrs. Kleiman sitting over there. She was my Orchestra Director, but I also know that I'm walking into just the best community, and I wanted to thank the board for giving me this opportunity, and I look forward to working with the community.
Charlie Getz. Charlie graduated from Cleveland State University in May of 2010 with a Bachelor of Science in Physical Education. He completed his student teaching experience with Mentor Schools, teaching both elementary and secondary students during the second semester of the '09-'10 school year. In August of 2010, he returned to Cleveland State to fulfill the requirements of health education licensure and completed his health practicum at the Cleveland Museum of Natural History, designing and presenting lessons to students grades 3 to 8 for the Junior Medical Camp at the museum. Charlie enjoys playing softball and camping with his wife and four kids, Madison, Natalie, Joey, and Jackson. We welcome Charlie as the new health PE teacher at Ridge Middle School.
So this is considered a date night for me and my wife. It's four kids, you know, hey, let's go to a board meeting! I would just like to thank, thank the board for this opportunity. Back in 2003, I told my wife in the Target parking lot in Willoughby that I, hey, I want to go back to school to help children, so it's been a long road, but I, I'm gracious for this and excited, and don't keep me up too late at school in the morning.
Mercedes Harden. Mercedes graduated from John Carroll University in May of 2013 with a, 2012 with a Bachelor of Arts in Early Childhood Education with a 4-5 general's endorsement and also a reading endorsement. In May of 2013, she completed the requirements at Notre Dame for a K-12 reading endorsement, excuse, as an intervention specialist. Mercedes completed her student teaching experience at Gate Mills Elementary in Mayfield School District in a Grade 1 classroom and has had several long-term substitute assignments in various districts. This past summer, she worked as an extended school year intervention specialist for the Hudson City School District. Mercedes enjoys spending time with her family, and she also loves collecting anything with elephants. We welcome Mercedes to Mentor Schools as she is the new intervention specialist at Rice
I just want to say a simple thank you. As you mentioned, this really is a dream come true for me, so I'm really excited to start my first year at Mentor.
Gloria Hobie. Gloria graduated from Western Governors University with a Bachelor of Science and K-12 Special Education. She was employed as a teacher in the CARES Summer Extended Year Program. This past summer, previous to acquiring her licensure, worked in the Mentor Public School District as a substitute classroom assistant during the 1213 school year. Gloria completed her student teaching experience at Memorial Middle School in an ED classroom and at Arbor Elementary School in the Euclid City School District in a 5th grade classroom. Previous to earning her degree in education, Gloria earned a Bachelor of Music degree from Bob Jones University in 1992. Gloria enjoys traveling with her husband and her three sons, Luke, Nate, and Seth. We welcome Gloria to Mentor Schools as the new intervention specialist in the CARES program at the Dr. Jaclyn A. Hoynes School.
I still feel like I wake up and I'm pinching myself. I feel a real honor and privilege to be part of the Mentor Exempt Village School District. Thank you so much, Members of the Board, for this opportunity.
Aaron Humphries. Aaron received his Bachelor's degree in middle childhood education from Cleveland State University in May of 2010 after completing his student teaching experience at Willow Elementary School in Cleveland School District during the second semester of his, the '09- '10 school year. Since August of 2010, Aaron has worked for their virtual schoolhouse in Cleveland as a math teacher for grades 6 through 9. In addition to that, Aaron is currently the head wrestling coach at Ridge Middle School and is active in his church as both a Sunday School teacher and a minister of music. Aaron recently was married this past July, the day before he was hired, and he, and he and, it was a great wedding. And he enjoys playing the piano and organ in his pastime. We welcome Aaron as the new math teacher at Ridge Middle School.
Good evening. I'm very excited to be standing here tonight. I would like to thank the board for this awesome opportunity to be part of such an elite school district. It's an honor and a privilege. I'm really looking forward to the start of a great school year on tomorrow. I'm just excited, really pumped about it.
Courtney Colizar. Courtney graduated from Marys College in New York in 2008 with a Bachelor of Arts degree in Psychology and Special Education. She earned her Master's degree in Educational Psychology, also at Marys College, in 2009. Her previous teaching experience includes the Lake County Educational Service Center, Huber Ridge Elementary School in Westerville, Ohio, and Hala Kula Elementary School in Honolulu, Hawaii. Courtney attended Marys College on a full athletic scholarship, participating both as a player and as a coach with the women's basketball team. Courtney is excited about her upcoming wedding in October to her fiancee, Steve. We welcome Courtney to Mentor Schools as she's the new intervention specialist at Hopkins
I would just like to thank the board for this opportunity, and I just want to say that everybody that I've met in Mentor has been so nice and welcoming towards me, and that I'm really excited for tomorrow.
Margie McGlosky. Margie graduated from Ursuline College in May of 2005 with a Bachelor's degree in Early Childhood Education. She completed her coursework for intervention specialist licensure at Notre Dame College in December of 2010. During the '04-'05 school year, Margie student taught in the Willoughby Eastlake District at Thomas Jefferson, Washington, and Longfellow Elementary. Her previous work experience includes substitute teaching in Willoughby Eastlake and Mentor School District and coaching volleyball at Ursuline and Independence City Schools. This past summer, Margie biked 162 miles in two days for MS. We welcome Margie as the new Grade 3 teacher at Hopkins Elementary School.
I think biking 162 miles is easier than talking in front of all of you, so, sorry about that, but I just want to thank the board so much. This is such a great opportunity. I am honored every single day to tell people I work for Mentor, and I will stay to your high standards.
Megan Mandato. Megan graduated from Bowling Green State University with a Bachelor's degree in middle childhood education in June of 2008. She is currently working on her Master's in Educational Administration, the completion of which is expected to be July of 2014. Megan completed her student teaching experience in Toledo, Ohio at Blessed Sacrament School, teaching science and social studies to 6th through 8th grade students. Her past work experience includes 8th grade science at Albuquerque Schools in Albuquerque, New Mexico, and 7th and 8th grade science for Glendale School District in Glendale, Arizona. In January 2013, she returned to Ohio, working as a substitute teacher in the Mentor Public School District. During Megan's first year of teaching with Glendale Schools, she was named Rookie of the Year. We welcome Megan as the new Grade 4 teacher at Fairfax Elementary School.
I just want to thank the board for this opportunity. I'm really, really excited. I grew up in Mentor. I was not able to actually be a Cardinal, though I was one of those Catholic school kids, so it's really exciting to be able to come back and finally be able to be a Cardinal.
Ben McMertry, please. Ben graduated from Bowling Green State University in December of 1999 with a Bachelor's degree in music education. Ben secured a position with Kirtland Local Schools in 2000 as the Director of Bands for grades 5 through 12 until 2003, at which time he returned to school to pursue a Master's degree. In August of 2005, Ben completed the requirements for his Master's degree in music education and began a full-time position with North Olmsted City Schools as the Director of Instrumental Music until resigning late July this summer to pursue an opportunity to become a Mentor Cardinal. Ben is proud dad to Ella and Clara and enjoys tent camping and playing golf with the family. We welcome Ben to Mentor Public Schools as the Band Director/Teacher at Memorial Middle School and Mentor High School.
I would like to thank the board and the administrative team for this wonderful opportunity that did come very late in the summer. It was quite a shakeup for our family, but a tremendous opportunity to be, as people have said, a Cardinal. I have had the chance to work with the marching band a little bit right behind you there on our practice field, and I didn't realize how loud it was till we were sitting here for in-service. It's, it's very loud, but tremendous kids indicating this is truly a special place, and I'm very glad to be here.
Caitlin Rogers. Caitlin graduated from the University of Mount Union in May of 2013 with a Bachelor's degree in Early Childhood Education. Caitlin completed her student teaching experience last year at both Buckley Elementary in Salem, Ohio, teaching kindergarten, and K-1 intervention at Lexington Elementary in Alliance. Her past work experience includes summer employment as a camp counselor at the Mentor Civic Center. Caitlin has walked a total of 46 parades in her lifetime and still counting on many more to come. We welcome Caitlin as the new Title I reading teacher at Sterling Morton Elementary School.
Well, graduating from high school four years ago, I never thought I would be standing here and be a Mentor Cardinal again, so I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity, the board members, thank you very much, the administrators, and I'm looking forward to meeting and working with all of the staff members and the community, so thank you.
John Weingart. John graduated from Kent State University with a Bachelor of Science in K-12 Health and Physical Education. He concluded his, he completed his student teaching experience at East Woods Elementary School in Hudson and at Nurdonia High School during the spring of 2013. John's past work experience includes a junior golf instructor at Brandywine Country Club for ages 7 through 12, a scoreboard operator for Aurora High School, and intramural referee for the Kent State Recreation and Wellness Center. John is excited to marry his high school sweetheart next summer. We welcome John as the new Health and Physical Education teacher for Brentmore, Sterling Morton, and Rice Elementary Schools.
First off, I'd like to thank the board for this incredible opportunity to become a teacher here. It really hit me today as I was decorating my bulletin board that, you know, I'm a teacher, and, you know, tomorrow's the first day of school. And this is just something I've ever, I've wanted to do since I was in middle school, and so just thank you again. I'm very excited for this opportunity.
We're going to take a short recess so the teachers can go get prepared, or Charlie, you can go, got a couple minutes, you can make it up to the beach for a date night, watch some sunset. Let's take a few minutes. Call the meeting back to order. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Just before I conclude my report, I'd like to bring up some of our new administrative team. First one would be Suzie Chin. Mrs. Chin will be hired as a unit principal at Mentor High School. She was a former teacher for us and substituted for us as an administrator last year, so we're excited to have her on the administrative team officially, and I want to welcome her to the team.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson, I'm so thankful for this opportunity at Mentor High School. It has been a pleasure and honor to work with our students and families for the past four years as a teacher. I am very humble and excited for this new challenge. I look forward to helping maximizing our students' potentials in my new role as a unit principal, and I will continue to build strong collaborative relationships with all of our stakeholders. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Next, I'd like to introduce Mr. Kevin Medges. Kevin will be a unit principal at Mentor High School as well, and he comes to us from Riverside where he was an administrator there for four years.
Good evening, Mr. President, Members of the Board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson. I'd like to take this time to thank you for giving me the opportunity to work in Mentor School District with so many great and innovating people. I look forward to working with the students, parents, community members, and staff here in Mentor. I am already learning the Mentor way, and I'm excited to begin the upcoming school year. Once again, thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce Mr. Jim McMahon. Mr. McMahon was a unit principal here at Mentor High School, and now he will serve as Mr. Wade's Assistant Principal at the high school in charge of secondary curriculum.
Good evening, Mr. President, Members of the Board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson. Thank you very much for the opportunity to serve as the Assistant Principal for Curriculum at Mentor High School for the 2013-2014 school year. I'm honored to have the chance to work in this capacity, and I look forward to serving the students of Mentor High School in this important role. I also look forward to participating in future educational initiatives at the high school level, such as the world of blended learning and its entrance into the high school curriculum in future years. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Next, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Christine Miley. Mrs. Miley was the Shore Assistant Principal for...
Three years.
Three years, and she will now serve as Hopkins Elementary Principal.
Good evening, Mr. President, Members of the Board, Mr. Miller, Mr. Wilson. I just want to say I am extremely excited to be the Hopkins Principal. The community has been over-the-top welcoming. It feels like home, so thank you for the opportunity, and it'll be a great year. Thank you.
Good luck tomorrow.
And last, but certainly not least, I'd like to bring up Mrs. Barbanis. Mrs. Barbanis was the Brentmore Elementary Principal... Mrs. Barbonas was the Brentmore Elementary Principal for two years and before that served as our curriculum director in a role she now returns to. So we're excited to have her back in the building with all of our new challenges, and we're glad that she's part of the team.
Mr. President, members of the Board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to work with the staff and students of Mentor Schools as the Director of Curriculum. I am honored to be a member of the curriculum team, and I plan to engage the staff in the development of innovative, challenging, and comprehensive curriculum to prepare our students for success. Thank you.
Great to hear back. Did we do the salary schedules?
Yes.
Did we do?
Yes, that was all in his one HR.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Board of Education report and recommendations. Under some new business, it's recommended that a delegate and alternate be appointed to the annual business meeting of the Ohio School Boards Association on November 11, 2013. Any takers?
Is that the one you do, Mary?
Yeah. If nobody else wants to do it, I'll be happy to do it.
We'll be cleaning up for my daughter's wedding, so I just don't know if I'll be available.
You've got a wedding. Yeah, I can do it.
The weekend before. And an alternate?
Sure.
Tom?
Yep.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Legislative report?
Having none.
Having none, very good. Moving on, Chief Financial Officers' Report and Recommendations, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. It's recommended that financial statements for the month of July 2013 be accepted and placed on file for audit.
So moved. Second.
Questions? Comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Sparcia?
Yes.
Mr. Mihak?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education ratify the investments presented in Exhibit 7-B.
So moved.
Second.
Comments? Questions? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Mihak?
Yes.
Mr. Sparcia?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the one cash transfer listed in Exhibit 7-C.
So moved. Second.
Comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Mihak?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Sparcia?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the appropriation modifications presented in Exhibit 7-D.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Questions? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Sparcia?
Yes.
Mr. Mihak?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the supplemental appropriations presented in Exhibit 7-E.
So moved.
Second.
Comments? Questions? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Mihak?
Yes.
Mr. Sparcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the 2013-2014 Student Activity Budgets and Purpose Statements presented in Exhibit 7-F and the materials distributed with the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Sparcia?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Mihak?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Recommended the Board of Education approve the payment of invoices presented in Exhibit 7-G.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Mihak?
Yes.
Mr. Sparcia?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
And to finish the implementation of a transfer of our credit card program to Huntington National Bank, I ask that you approve the resolution in Exhibit 7-H, which is a part of the master agreement for the credit card program.
Dan, we're just changing banks.
Correct. We will save approximately $9,200 a year in merchant fees.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Sparcia?
Yes.
Mr. Mihak?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
That completes my items this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Any unfinished business? Hearing none? Any new business?
I have one comment. About two years ago, this board started the process of looking for a new superintendent, and obviously, Mr. Miller is sitting here in front of us, and we think he's done a heck of a job. But one thing I wanted to talk about was during that process, this board felt it very important, a goal that within the district for everyone to have performance-based incentives be a big part of compensation. And when we looked for a superintendent, that was something that was very important to us. And it was important to not only talk the talk, but walk the walk. A big part of Mr. Miller's compensation is essentially a holdback for the board to decide at the end of the year whether he earned that money or not. It isn't like it used to be. You had a salary, you showed up in the morning, you go home at night, and you get paid. And tonight, in executive session, this board will decide how much of that performance stipend that Mr. Miller is entitled to for this year. And that, for Mr. Miller, that's a significant portion of his compensation. It's about, it's slightly less than 10 percent that is held back. That's at the complete discretion of this board, whether to award him that or not. So before we went through that process, I wanted to make it, you know, known to the community that, you know, we have a lot of, Mr. Miller put a lot of faith in himself by that holdback in his compensation, and this board to treat him fairly when that happens. So that's all I wanted to talk about.
Thank you. Any other new business? Hearing of the public? Anyone want to say anything at all about anything? Okay. Then I will take a motion for executive session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation and the sale or acquisition of real estate.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Sparcia?
Yes.
Mr. Mihak?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?[1785.36]